Good evening, welcome to the Town Assembly Board Meeting. Would you please join us in the pledge? Mary, would you lead us up, please?
Would you lead us?
Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from the June 18th meeting. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a second. Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Ife?
Yes.
I vote yes. Minutes have been approved. Next, we'll open the meeting to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address any active application, you may do so now. Given nobody's approach, we'll move on to the first agenda item. This is a continuation of a site plan for Wilkins Recreational Vehicles for the property of 8010 Burton Road.
Good evening. Alex Ammering with Costage Engineering. With me, Brian Wilkins of Wilkins RB. We were before this board two meetings ago. We spent quite a bit of time going more through their operations and the site itself. I think tonight I'll kind of jump right into where we've gone since then. Obviously, we received some comments from the board. After the meeting, we received a comment letter from Mark pertaining to engineering items and then also Municipal Design LLC. I think it was an architectural review letter, but it touched on a number of things. Lastly, we did also receive the county referral recommendations. There was only a couple items from them. They asked that access remain to the rear parcels for future development. That private drive isn't actually part of our project, so that road will obviously remain under separate ownership. There was also a state DOT comment which kind of echoed some of the discussion we had with the board regarding removing that asphalt that was kind of remaining, even though it wasn't a curb cut, there's a sidewalk. I'm not sure how that came to be, but... So we did respond to both the comment letters. We resubmitted updated site plans, architectural elevations, and response letters. I think at this point, we pretty much agreed with the majority of the comments. A number of them were technical, so I don't want to weigh down the discussion tonight with those, but I think I'd like to just open it up to items the board would like to talk about.
Mike? You're late, so I gotta slap you. You're up here now.
Come on over here, we gotta sneak for you.
I think lastly, we did also receive about a week ago, a second letter from Mark Parrish. A lot of the items he were acknowledging were addressed. The number of the items, he encouraged the board, you know, to discuss with us, the applicant. And lastly, we did shift the southern gate back slightly, about 10 feet, and we did perform a vehicle turning movement. I brought a couple copies of that, which I can distribute, but proving that if a vehicle turned in that right in off of Route 11, they could do a K-turn around that mountable curb and then exit, so.
So the road to the north, what is, what state ownership? Who owns it?
The property to the rear.
That's a public right of way?
I don't think it's currently.
No, it's a separate parcel of this property. There's access easement across it that allows this property utilized after.
Okay, so they have, they have a right of way to it?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that subdivision came about after, maybe a year ago or so.
All right, we'll open it to questions, Mike?
I got here late.
I'll go, we can go to Chuck if you want first.
I'm good for now.
Chuck?
When did we end up adding or changing to landscape subject?
Yep, so we were made aware, you know, the new landscape requirements which dictate a number of shrubs and trees based off of the linear runage. We submitted a landscape plan, bringing it up to the current iteration of the code. We did take credit for, there is some existing landscape, but it wasn't, it was pretty far short of what the town currently requires, so. I provided, I think in one of my responses, the calculation, but I believe it was around 50, it was six new trees, code required eight, and there was two existing, and then I think there was 41 shrubs required, and there was, I believe, 10 or 15 existing. So we added 20 or 25 shrubs.
Keeping in mind you're not hiding the sales items.
Hiding what?
The sales items.
No, RVs will not be.
Well, they're a pretty good side.
That's why we push them. We've got a congregating tree toward each corner, but the middle is still.
Okay, good.
And then we kind of filled in where that weird entrance was. They had a landscape bed on both sides of that.
Okay.
So we, okay. There is a bed, that's at the south entrance. We'll call it the myth. Yeah, yep. Because it would have looked awkward because they were beds that were along where that asphalt area was, so if you just made it grass, it would look kind of goofy, so.
Okay, well, look forward to filling those acres of emptiness to start with. Get you guys back down into the traffic here in town. So, good luck.
Mary?
No, I was going to ask about the landscaping too, but I don't. I mean, I don't think I have any questions. We went over everything last time. So I think I'm good.
Zach?
I'm all set. Looks good. Thanks.
I want to talk about the fencing along the front. So initially, I was opposed to it. Then I saw the pictures and I'm like, you know, it's not bad. Then I read the review from our architect, and he talked about the ability to secure the site with landscaping and the boulders. And I'm now leaning back towards not having the fence along Route 11, parallel with Route 11, and moving more towards a landscaping type of setting that would create the security that you're looking for. If we do it here, then we're doing it. It's nowhere else. It's just, you know, I wasn't for it initially, but your presentation made me change my mind a little bit, but now I'm going back. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. I'm just one vote, but what are your thoughts?
I think there was a comment similar from Municipal Design, you know, about that corridor, and their comment was, you know, there's not really a precedent for the fencing. It's like, well, we acknowledge that.
Yep.
Code does allow for the fencing, so part of me wants to say, you know, generally, if the town is going in a certain direction, you know, and believes, you know, that that's something they feel strongly about, it should to some degree be reflected in the code.
I think we have discretion as well.
Yeah.
Doing site plan review.
Yeah, aesthetics.
And you see, and you see it nowhere else. And if we allow it here, then somebody else applies and says, I want that fence too. It's just from an aesthetics standpoint, I'm not sure it's the right thing to do. Any other thoughts up here?
Can we see the fencing?
Did you get that?
I don't think I got that.
I think it was the EFS 10, the the color on the sample document was white, but it will be black.
Your main purpose is security, right?
The main purpose. The motorized vehicles, the catalytic converters. Anything like that that you can do that helps make that a little bit more difficult. By the time there's a theft issue, then probably you should haul down and drive in there.
I'm not sure that fence is going to stop that if it's going to happen. You're not fenced along the back and they can climb over. I thought it was more like getting in an RV and driving it over the curb and then out. If you're not fenced along the back.
There's no.
And bad guys can jump over that fence. Just like the.
Yeah, I mean, generally, if someone's motivated, they'll get through any fence.
Any idea how tall that fence is?
It's four feet in the front. Once it gets to the rear, it goes to six, which is consistent with the code.
And then nothing along the back?
No, there's no real vehicular access along the back.
I'm talking about foot traffic, if that's the concern.
The brick, and then the fence on top.
She's asking about the brick on the bottom and then the fence on top.
They have that in Burton.
I think one thing.
Just along Route 11, right?
You know, it, it sounds like there might be future high-density residential in the rear. At some point, I think that was discussed, but, you know, one thing is just avoiding cut-through traffic. You know, off of Route 11, if someone's coming on that sidewalk, you know, and they end up, you know, living in the apartments in the back of that private drive, the shortest route would be cutting through, you know, the Wilkins site. Your point's taken. If someone's motivated, they'll, you know, they'll find a way, but.
Any other thoughts up here? Mark, do you have any thoughts on it?
No, I, you know, I think this is a, this guy gave you four. I would like to, I guess, talk about the, you know, the turning, the ability for the vehicle to turn there. This only looks like it's about five or six feet.
Yeah, I apologize. I realize we shifted the fence. You can see now.
Okay.
So when, when you pulled up the site plan, I realized it must have been modified. I only brought four copies without. Here's a copy. We, we didn't want to move it too far back because if you move it too far back, people won't be able to identify, you know, when they're coming up the road. But we found if we shifted it, I think it was about 10 or 15 feet back, it would provide enough to do a K-turn around that mountable curb.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was pretty long, just.
I, I saw the site plan pulled up and your second letter made more sense after, so I apologize about that.
So is that the asphalt area that the DOT wants removed?
Right there.
Flexes.
When you talk about the backside, you saw it was going to be gates?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a big.
Yeah, because you wouldn't be able to correct that with landscaping. You're concerned with security.
About the brick with the fence up, and that kind of looks small-town, hometown feel to me. If it was along Route 11, just in the front. Is that what you're worried about?
Yeah. I mean, it looks nice, it's too high. You know what she's talking about with the bliss?
Yeah.
Probably not cheap either.
That's the problem with submitting cut sheets. You don't see something else. Are you like?
I think, I think you might want to follow the code relative to opacity. Are you talking about solid brick at the bottom?
Yeah.
Fencing in the top?
Yeah.
And you're required to be.
Pictures here.
Yeah, I think Mark had it up on the screen a second ago. Yeah, so I think. She's talking about the brick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope that you wouldn't want to do that. Now you just started.
And just to the gate.
I would be happy with that.
What about a barrier of more landscaping trees?
That would be up to them.
If you're worried about someone when RVs out.
There's so much ceiling on our RV. It bothers. That is kind of like, it's constantly sending you a chat. The hassle of doing the TVs and catalytic converters, it's the repairs you have to make after a fast stop.
I don't think that fence would stop them.
No.
I don't think that fence would stop them. Just along the front.
So you're okay with fence on the side?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to come back to you and say, ask for a fence, right?
Yes.
But it's much landscaping.
Right, we want to see it on the plans. You already have some onsite.
Too much landscape also creates kind of areas for folks to hide that, you know, shouldn't be there. I don't know.
We go with it? I appreciate that. I have just in the front then. The sides will be good?
Yeah, I think we'll go back and evaluate it as a whole now. If on the drawing, we decide not to do any fence, you don't care, right?
I don't, but counsel?
Well, that'd be, that's what it'd be approved. So if we had a fence on two sides, that's what you're approved of, then you are bound to comply with that approval or substantially comply with it, and that becomes a code decision.
Steve, would you consider a simple? So codes would consider a simple modification. They would be able to handle it internally. Yep.
Quick question. I know I got here late. You, you got three locations now? And then are you combining any of those to build this, or?
Uh, we're going to go, this will allow us to build a pre-location. So do you operate out of Burton?
Okay.
We'll operate this start. And then a play location over, and that's a lead.
Okay, so the parking lot itself is huge. I'm sure the building is pretty good too. You're going to be able to occupy that whole building?
It's not about space.
Really? That kind of shocks me. I was wondering if you.
RVs fill up space in there. No, it's, um, it, it's a nice space for, for Wolf to do a amount.
Good luck there, that's great.
Stephen, anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
Neil?
Just a quick question, please. When you're moving that gate to the east, how far did you move it on this? I'm going to reference it for, for a fraction.
Oh, boy. Let's see, so an RV spots 15 feet, it might be 20.
Mark?
I think pretty well said. The only thing I want to point out, I mentioned in the letter, I'll just reiterate it, is the, they're, they're not proposing to strike the RV display yard. So they're not bound to have organized layout they can see there without the strike. So it may not look like that. I think they've done that just to indicate how many vehicles are completely fit in that area, but it's not going to be striped that way, and I don't know if there's any that really could display them, but that pattern, I have seen similar lots.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I would say that we would park the vehicles one of two ways. And we do like to switch it up and give a lot of different look, but the way it's drawn there to be great look because units are facing, uh, traffic going by. The other way, sometimes we park it, don't have the front facing, and we just have everything parallel to the road so that customers can see down the see down the road, and see the depth of the empty ground, and also see the depth. But I think, I, I would think that our, our impact would be to park the way it's like out there, we like the idea of having the vehicles front facing that traffic and.
I, you know, this is, you have just a lot of points out in case the drive line, say, don't think it's just a foot court. What you would do necessarily.
Yeah, and their reasoning with different sized vehicles changing all the time made some.
But the drive aisles will always remain open, correct?
That, that is generally the one comment we get for, you know, fire access, and what we do is we encourage the facility director, manager, usually, if they want to get together with the, the fire folks and just walk around and talk about it, because to be honest, what ends up on drawings, you know, the, the fire chief isn't, when he's responding, isn't, doesn't have a set of plans with them, and you know, the folks operating the facility aren't looking at a construction set of drawings either, so kind of having that relationship is usually what works best.
How big is the biggest trailer, and then how small is the smallest one? I mean, just roughly.
RV is up to 45 feet. Small as.
You know, are you comfortable with the driveways?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to put in a book that says they're going to maintain the, the driveway is free of display.
Please. Mark, do you have anything else? I'll make a motion for our standard seeker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike? I'm good. Say yes.
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes to the seeker. Neil, would you make a motion for approval as we discuss, please, when you're ready?
Yes, we're going to move the adoption of reservation, approve the application known as Wilkins Recreational Vehicles, Inc., AD10 Burton Road, proposed. Uh, Wilkins RB initiative, the case provision on the following. One, both teams rendered dinner at all bases presented by the Gats and to the plan according to the application. Don't incorporate my reference into this site plan and the board's approval, but, uh, accordingly, the actual price substantial to the front seat is a question. To the proposed gate for the southern entrance shall be moved approximately 20 feet to the east. This change is reflected on the modification presented by this applicant and shall be incorporated into this approval. Three, there will be no fencing along Route 11. Four, the driveway if it remains free of display and accessible at all times.
I think maybe, um, that there'll be no fence along Route 11, and I think they, they revise plan or.
Perfect. Would somebody like to make that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Mike?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Good to have you here.
How soon do we expect to see trailers sitting out there?
First of the year.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, we don't want to make a change in the middle of our seasons. Here, sign and jam, get the renovation done, and start moving November, December, and be ready to go digging real long.
Great, look forward to it.
Yeah, so there were those signs. Both be coming back. Yeah, we'll, we'll come back. The plan says they have.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you mentioned the first time, yep.
Next item on the agenda is a zone change recommendation. This is for the, for Circle T Enterprises, property at 6709 East Half Road, from agricultural to industrial.
Oh, small one.
The Eaton, the Blue Boy, or Indian Romans.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
I know there's Logan on East Half Road. Thank you.
Yeah, this way.
If anybody wants any extra copy, I left them on the chair back there. But moving forward, this property is located on East Half Road. We're looking for, it's currently zoned agricultural. We're looking to zone change it to industrial specifically for the use of a concrete batch plant. It's roughly 26.4 acres. If you look on, what's, the first sheet that you have is just the general Google image that I took for, just so you can see the surrounding areas. The second sheet is the existing zoning in the area. Third sheet is a highlighted, up-close version of the existing zoning. As you can see, everything around us is agricultural. The property to the immediate east is general commercial. The fourth sheet is the future land use plan. I bring that up because the, this area on the land use plan is proposed to be industrial. One of the reasons why we actually came to the town a year and a half ago, two years ago, about doing this exact project, but they, you know, wanted us to get, wanted to get through the comprehensive plan before we had any zone change application, so we went, waited for that. This property is ideal or located as proposed industrial, so that's what we are proposing here is an industrial zoning. The fifth sheet is literally just a blow-up of the area, highlighting roughly where the property is. And the other sheet, the second to last sheet is the rough sketch plan that we came up with. We haven't gotten into too much detail with any type of sketch plan, site plan, or any of that. This is the initial phases of the zone change application. We understand that there's a lot that would have to be done for the site plan application and all that. Right now, we're talking about the zoning. But one of the big things we want to make sure with the town, with the board, is this specific use, we understand it's controversial, it has its, its concerns, especially with neighbors, and we've gotten letters already from the neighbors that, you know, they don't like the, the idea of a concrete batch plant, and we fully understand that. We want to make sure that the town was okay with us moving this forward. If you, if you truly had a, a major problem with it, if you truly didn't want this type of use on this property in this location, you know, please feel free to be front, uh, up for, upfront with us so that we, we don't waste the board's time, we don't waste the town's time. We do think most of their concerns and the neighbors' concerns can be mitigated as far as noise, smells. We have a lot of those tests already done. Smells, we have a lot of those tests already done. Um, please note, we are planning on enclosing the actual batch plant itself, so. You won't see it necessarily from the road and that'll mitigate a lot of the dust and noise and smells and all that kinda stuff. But again, we can go through all the the noise tests, the study tests and all that. That's all great and we do think we can mitigate all the concerns with the town. As far as that goes with the neighbors. But if the board truly thinks this is not a great spot for it, we we would like to try to mitigate that first. Um. Well, disclosure, there's lots lots of wetlands on this property. So no matter what we do, if we do get the zone change in in uh to um industrial, we eventually have to go through a DEC permit for um. Uh, in the encroachment area, we technically will not try to. Get into the actual wetlands themselves, but we will be um in the buffer areas surrounding the wetlands. Um, we have a DEC um um. Specialist on board to start that process. But again, we wanted to get this. Meeting going with the zone change, get some questions, concerns, major questions, concerns from the boards. Um, prior to getting the DEC and and turning our specialists loose. Other than that, you know, I I welcome any uh questions concerned from the board. Um, Mr. Terese is here, he is the owner. Um, he would actually like to invite anybody from the board to come up to his existing plant in Mexico. If anybody wanted to, to see how it operates, see how the sound, the smells and everything go at his existing plant. It's gonna be the same exact plant that he has. In Mexico going here so that you get a real world vision of what's going on there. Um, but that was something he wanted me to bring up. Any questions?
How far are you from the neighbors? I mean.
Uh, our proposed building, if you go to the sketch plan.
You got that one? Oh.
Should be part of what I submitted.
But in in comparison to Mexico, how far are they from the neighbors?
How far away your neighbors in Mexico?
One probably. In on each side, yeah.
Okay. And this is gonna be comparable to that or?
Comparable, three hundred to five hundred feet, yes. There's some, if you go to the very first sheet. It'll show some of the neighbors along East uh Taff Road to the west are the closest ones, and there is somebody across street. Oh, and there was one right up. On the road on the on the east side as well. But you can see this is where the rough building will sit roughly off, three to four hundred feet off the. Uh, road boundary. You have a residential uh house here and you have some residential neighbors over in here. So comparable to what he's got at his existing plant.
But you're not talking like a ton of neighbors, so I mean, it's.
There, this is not a saturated residential structured neighborhood, no.
Uh, question, Tim, uh, what is the zoning at this point on the east and west side of this property?
So again, this property here, uh, this property here is own general commercial. The rest of them around us are agricultural right now.
Even on the west side there?
It does start industrial to the east of us, I'm sorry. About. Four properties, five properties to the east, so probably approximately a thousand feet to the west. I'm sorry, there actually is industrial over here.
I'm curious, where where is uh your plant in Mexico area?
It's way down Darryl Road in uh Southern New Haven.
I'm not familiar with those roads.
If you take four eighty-one and come down, you get off at the second Phoenix exit. Make a right and then a quick left on on Route six. You follow a straight on in, six turns into Darryl, another quarter mile down the right hand side.
Okay, I probably couldn't find it, but.
We'll make sure we get you good direction to get there, but. And I would like to say that we do have, like, like I said, noise studies and other people start with the concrete plants and everything. You know, all these concrete plants. All through these areas are forty, fifty years old. We're putting brand new stuff in. We're putting two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five stuff in. And they come a long ways with the filtration, they come a long day, way with noise. And like, and like I said, what we plan on doing here is even closing them. They won't hear this. It. They will not hear this plan.
Hmm. Well, that probably is one of the first and second things people think of is a is a. Dust and the noise. But they're thinking about older plants that uh, oh, things get.
And we did bring the board out in the even also. And they commented on how they looked up on the roof of buildings and everything and they could find no dust. They were sitting there having a conversation. Twenty feet from the from the plant, like, again, welcome, good, come on out, show you that, I'm just trying to tell you. Really, actually, uh, enjoy it, come out so you can start giving some comfort to it. I'm not, I'm not thought they were.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Wetlands is the bear here.
Wetlands is the bear, um, for sure. I mean, no matter what. No matter what, even if we got the zone change, there's no guarantee that we can do everything with the wetland situation that we have. Yes, that's that's a um big concern. But no matter what. Even if you get the zone change, anybody that wants to do anything on this piece of property is gonna have to go through those those um. Same same hoops. Um, again, I don't believe we. We didn't start the process for the zone change itself because in theory, the zone change is not the site plan. I think that. With the site plan and moving forward with the site plan, you you definitely need those permits in place.
Sure.
But for the so the zone change, I didn't think it was necessary to start that process yet.
And looking at the uh perimeter around the main building, for example. Uh, it really doesn't look like enough room for large cement trucks to negotiate.
Um, we do, we did make sure that we have at least twenty-five feet on each side of the, this is a very, very large scale, but we made sure and we worked with his experts as far as. Drive lanes and making sure the building, like, and all the trucks are gonna operate inside the building. They have room to to maneuver in the building.
Oh, really?
So we wanna make sure the the traffic going around the building is really just gonna circumvent the building. There's gonna be traffic inside the building, moving stuff around as well.
I think it's, it's all you do is they say that left side here, we're gonna come on up. And when they get turned around and right here on that very top end of that building.
Uh-huh.
Um. There's gonna be, there's gonna be a door. Concrete truck pulls on and builds and backs back out and comes back around this other drive.
Back out to the road.
Or have wash outfits and then gone. Same thing, all closed in, the doors. Um. And uh. Like a wash. A truck wash. Yeah, right down, right down that right side and they come out through the the wash.
Hmm.
And disperse into into our uh wash outfit.
Well, thanks for the information. We're all learning here. Eric?
Oh, did you purchase this property just for this?
No, he's under contract to purchase the property for this.
Okay. So if this gets approved.
Yeah, then purchase it and he'll he'll be the owner operator of the of the project.
So. I'm interested in. The new way that you're describing it, um, but I am concerned about the neighbors and the concrete trucks coming in and out. Um. From the site. So how many trucks go in and out?
Ru- roughly, he he thinks about fifty a day.
Fifty? And when they, you fill the trucks, you bring it inside the building? Is that what you do?
Inside the building, we plan on putting all the material, it's a sand. Uh. Obviously water coming up from the main. Uh. So. All the, all the process that is all gonna be inside the building. I just said, when that truck's pulling up, all this is, pull up the left side, turn around, come in, build, right back out. And right straight on out. That's what the process is. And that's why a little bit, everything else, but when they come back in, they wash out. Right up there, wash out, back up, right up the left side. It would just be like a loop. And out.
Is there any concern with the washout process? Like where that, does it just go right into the public?
Yes, we're gonna have to engineer it, show how that all works as far as when we get into the site plan process, they'll have to show details of how it all gets mitigated and all that, but. We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay.
And that's pretty much the standard process. Many, I won't say all, many concrete plants of washouts. How that basically goes, you build three bays and you dump your dirty stuff into the first bay. And then as it fills up, it cyclones down into the second bay. And then it goes into the third bay. It's the third bay you can reuse to go ahead and make your concrete. Or do you wash out? Do you rinse out with it? So you really don't disperse any water on the on the ground. You're you're in a, you're in a system of reusing this water. And then, and then that first bay, you wind it up so often and you, with your excavator, means when you come.
Okay. So I. Again, with fifty trucks in and out. I mean. The neighbors are used to. A rural setting. I mean, that's why they chose their houses. And I know that areas going to be. Developing and growing. I just don't know if this is a. Or um. A concrete mixing plant.
I guess my my only comment to that is, again. Anybody else is going to come in here for an industrial zoned project and probably a lot of the other industrial uses will have as much, if not more. Truck traffic. That's the the whole idea of industrial. It's literally in the definition of high truck traffic. I honestly didn't think fifty trucks a day was that high. We can get a uh traffic study that um represents the. The um, that shows that it, that East Taff Road would be fine with it and and get that done for you. But again. This this whole area is supposed to be industrial per the comprehensive plan. I know it's not there yet.
It's not there yet.
It's not there yet.
It can change.
But the idea would be that most most industrial uses are gonna have a pretty high uh traffic. Situation.
Six day a week operation.
Sorry?
How how many days are you using it? I mean.
How many days?
Six days?
Hours.
Five days?
Operation.
Six days and. That is not, not as long. We usually try to get wrapped up.
Okay.
And with all the projects going on, I think this is needed in in the area.
That may, I hear that.
And and just really, I don't know, son. But really guys, look at it over, look at it over ten hours. Where is that? Truck rolling in and out of there in thirty, twenty minutes maybe. It's not like, and 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 he's. I'm always gonna be one hundred percent honest with you. In the morning, you're gonna roll trucks out of there pretty good. Then they're gonna cycle back in for their second round, sometimes a third round or whatever, but, so you're gonna be a little busier in the morning. But again, you're gonna be busier before your traffic starts. And it's really, as we said, not only. Can we, we're gonna get your traffic study. We did a traffic study not far from there, but we already know what the traffic studies have come out. And and just what he said, it's already showing that that it's it's not a problem there.
Is it possible to pull up your other? Plant in Mexico? Like, can we see what that looks like?
Yeah, I just tried to look it up on my phone here, but I don't really know.
That's for sure.
How how new is that?
How long's that plant been there? One in Mexico? Maybe. While Mark is doing that, I have a question. If you have fifty trucks leaving per day, how about the trucks bringing in the supplies? To make the concrete for the trucks going out?
Well.
For how long?
We can't, we can't figure down fifty trucks.
Oh, total? Oh, okay.
I thought it was the concrete mixer trucks.
No, you do have to.
Eric? Did you just say?
Yeah.
Does it look like the right area? They're they're all of?
Yeah.
It probably just doesn't show the.
Seventy-eight, that's the.
One seventy-eight. It should show two buildings right by the road.
Yeah, I guess that's my point. I didn't, I I tried to look it up, maybe.
Maybe.
It's just over uh.
Oh, those you do that a lot of them plants. Oh, you got one forty-two. Put up one side of eight.
Yeah, well.
Doesn't show the. It's not updated enough.
Yeah, I did, please, please. Yeah.
Nation twenty-three. Image is from January twenty-three.
Says.
At the top.
Will we possibly be on the wrong spot? One of those buildings up there. Oh, is that it right there?
There you go, right there. Yeah. See the sidewalk sitting up straight back? That sidewalk is laying on the ground, there's no.
Okay.
Do, do concrete plants have a lot less effect on the neighboring area than tarvea plants? I mean, as far as. You know, gain what you want to be approved for tarvea plant might. I mean, worse.
Personally don't know the difference between the concrete. As far as the effect on the neighbors.
Yeah, so I was kinda looking at it, cause I, I think there was a tarvea plant that was gonna be approved and they rejected it, right? Or was it?
That's correct.
Griselli or whatever? Yeah, that was Northern Boulder.
I think asphalt, it's like when you, when you see it being poured on, on the highway and everything, it does.
Right, that's where I was.
It does not. I'm not, not like, not somebody else's.
No, 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 but I mean, but.
I would say yes. I would say they have more of a. Smell.
Right.
And like I said, this dust thing is just a. You're gonna, you're gonna put this in right inside a building. You can't put a, can't, you can't put something's putting off dust and everything inside of the building. Meaning, you know, the manufacturer and everything, you're all the dead inside the building is fine. The filtration systems are one hundred percent. Um, like I said, it's not. Not uh, again, not not pretty big. There's plant right down there. And Oswego that uh, that there for nine mile and it got built. And that's not seemingly, I don't know what we're trying to do.
Mary, anything additional?
So the buildings in front, that's not you, right? You're.
This is me right here.
Wait, oh, on the left. So those trucks have to do with your concrete plant?
Well, that's my mechanic stuff.
Okay. This really helped to visualize.
Thank you. Zach?
Not in love with the idea, but I also don't hate it. I wish maybe the property was in a slightly different function, but I understand not everything could be perfect. Um. I appreciate the information, the invite. Thank you.
Bye. Right now. Location. No.
No.
Not Siswa. So you you guys got one place that don't have any, any reason to be worried about Siswa. Then you go uh behind us, you go all the way out, four eighty-one, nothing. I mean, you're not gonna find many places that you guys do want. You know. And and like, like you said earlier, unless you get, do not want a concrete plant here, I I just agree a little bit on it being the worst spot. It's really a very good spot in the bottom. Um, like when you look at the amount of people you're gonna affect in Siswa.
Touch on, you said ten hours a day. Operations. Would those operation hour shifts, say you had like an overnight project? I mean, could you have? Could you have trucks going in and out of there at two AM if the project calls for it? Okay, so you're kinda.
Like to do is, I would like to look at my competitions within your same town. I'd like this, and I'd like to treat it the same way. So let's just go about it that way. But I'm not asking to do anything they're not doing. Uh, but I I would hate to go ahead and. And and crunch myself down where I can't take a job at four o'clock in the afternoon that that they go take. You get where I'm coming from?
Yeah. Of course, I think you should, yeah.
And I'm not asking for one thing more.
Fair enough. Now you should be given a fair shot, yeah, of course.
Try to be educated to.
No, no, I, and I'm just trying to explain where we, where we understand one another and then if you've taken, taken something I'm saying, maybe that would, you know, just ask me and I'll explain it because. I'm pretty, I'm just a pretty open book. I'm not gonna go ahead and try to, you know, sugarcoat anything. I'm not gonna try to slick you guys, I'm gonna tell you honestly. Just the way it is and then we're gonna back it up with facts. We're not gonna say I don't know about it, get that. We do have some facts on the, on this. We do have some facts on the, on this, uh, on the way this is controlled. We've got to do it. Already been through it. I have plants of twenty plants that I have sitting ready to go is a twenty-four plant. So it's been.
How long has the competition been where they're at? At, how long? How long is the competition?
I think twenty fifteen.
Okay, so it's, it's within the last ten years. Okay.
Um, first of all, I very much appreciate your presentation, taking the time to share with me with those beneficial for, for all of us, right? Um, I wanted to point out that the town did receive a couple of letters from neighboring residents expressing their concerns, and I'm sure the town board will make a part of the public hearing records. Did you see the county planning board?
I didn't see the.
Came out today, but.
They didn't have any, um, object, they basically said they had no response to it.
No response, a lot, a lot of comments on the wetlands.
Yep.
Like we would anticipate.
And, uh, traffic and making sure the DOT driveway meets all that. So yes, that's pretty typical, but nothing specific as far as modifications and all that.
Would this operation be similar to the one that's on Northern Boulevard?
Is that gonna be similar to Northern Boulevard?
The Resale operation? So I drive down Northern Boulevard every day. And if I envision that truck traffic on a one lane road scares me. Whether, whether, whatever directions they're coming from, turning in or coming out, you know, the trucks are slow because they got a lot of weight in them. I'm not sh- I'm talking about concrete trucks. It's different. I get behind them at a red light and then, you know, they have to pull out. And they're slow, understandably. My point here is that you have, you're just gonna, you, you don't have two lanes, right? You have one, you're limited to one lane.
Well, you know, again, I believe in Taff Road, depending on where we're going, we might go down flat. We might be going, uh, we might be going left out of Taff. We might be going right out of Taff. Everything I do around that, when Resale is, he's pulling out, he's going right, and he's gotta go up, turn around and come back to the, to the interstate. I don't have to do that. All I have to do is come out, make a right, come down and get on the interstate. So, I mean, in, in all reality, again, we actually have a, a better situation, uh, than that.
And again, with traffic being your concern, we can get a traffic study done to show all that.
I have it.
Okay.
I live it every day. Steve, anything?
Nah, I don't think so at this time, no.
No?
Yeah, I guess that's one of the questions that being asked.
Yeah.
So it has very little to do with it. Um, because if you approve an industrial use or industrial zone, the zone change, they could say tomorrow, well, you know, I changed my mind. And then they could use that product for any use that's allowable in an industrial zone.
Oftentimes, we don't even get the sketch review for zone change.
So meanwhile, the site plan questions are nice. You really gotta think of, of what, what they're asking, asking the changes to an industrial zone. And that is a change of use that brings in all the potential uses that are in the industrial realm on that property. Not just the batch plant, not just his batch plant, not just his proposal, but anything else in the future once that's made. That's really the question we're forced, not about us.
Correct. Mark? So our job is to make a recommendation to the town board. We're doing that tonight. So we make a recommendation, then the actual decision rests with the town board. And I'm ready to make a recommendation for a negative recommendation of the town board. Thoughts or comments?
So even though the strategic plan for the town, that's that is the future view.
Yeah, that's not written in stone. It was a group of people taking the whole town and saying, hell, let's put lines here.
You were one of those people.
Yes, I was. I didn't look at each lo, each corner and. Neil, would you make that motion, please?
You're gonna move for the doctor to recommend the denial of the application for a zone change under Circle T Enterprises LLC, uh, John Torres, sixty-seven oh-nine East Taff Road, agricultural to industrial.
I'll make a motion. Would somebody like to second that? If not, you can present a new motion. Thank you. Mike?
I don't know, I think it's, I think it's needed and then.
So you can vote no to the motion if you like?
I know.
Did, was that a vote?
Yes.
Chuck? Uh, no, no. Mary?
I vote no.
Zach?
Uh, it's gonna be a no.
No, but yes, would somebody like to make a new motion? Neil, would you make a motion for approval, please?
You're gonna move for the adoption of a resolution recommending the approval of the application for a zone change under Circle T Enterprises LLC, John Torres, sixty-seven oh-nine East Taff Road, agricultural to industrial.
And would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make that a motion.
We have a second. Yeah, second. Mike?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah.
Zach?
No.
And I vote no. Motion carries. No, yeah, it does.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night. That concludes our agenda items. Is there any discussion from the team?
Um, we wanted to discuss the letters that went out to the applications that have been sitting for quite some time. Um, and you said, I only got one response. Question that their application remain active and they're preparing information to, to come in again. That's surrounded living. I don't, I haven't heard from anybody else and I don't think.
And the date, the date is well passed, right?
Yeah, the nineteenth of, 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 was it nineteen?
Yeah.
So. Done.
Okay. And I just realized I, I forgot that we did have Cindy tonight. So I will see if we can get a substitute for next meeting and I'll see if Tony maybe can, uh, use the, the, uh, the YouTube to, to create some minutes.
I just realized that.
Yeah, I just, I forgot. Me too. I looked up a horse and I forgot she said she wasn't gonna be here for July.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned. Good night everybody.